Reconvene the special meeting. Mr. City Attorney, any final action to report out?
No final action tonight, Madam Mayor.
Then we will adjourn the special meeting and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yeah, Council Members Leary-
Here.
Raythal-
Here.
Kozlowski-
Here.
Aquino-
Here.
And Rorba is absent.
And Council Member Rorba sends her regrets. She is unable to be here. She had a death in the family, and so she had to hop on an airplane. So, we do want to send her our sincerest condolences for the loss of her uncle. If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All you baseball players, remove your hats, please. There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, any agenda updates?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. No update tonight.
Okay, that takes us to business from the floor. This is the public's opportunity to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. But please know that state law prohibits us from taking action or deliberating on items that are not on the agenda. So, if you have, if you want to speak now, or if you want to speak on any item on the agenda, we do ask that you fill out a blue speaker card. They're on that table in the back. We do give each person three minutes, and the clerk will call you up at the appropriate time. If you have a blue speaker card, you can hand it to Officer McCullough over here. Do we have any requests to speak?
You do. Your first speaker tonight under business from the floor looks like a group effort of Sherri Richter, Priscilla Schroeder, Sue Spielman, and Peggy Platt. Come on down.
Good evening. Hello there. We're back. But this time, we are talking about a buzz that's going on at the zoo this weekend. It is National Honeybee Day on Saturday. So, if you come down to the zoo, you will see everything about honeybees, as well as a bunch of other animals and insects, and all sorts of special presentations. So, we are here to invite you to National Honeybee Day with some, you could just bring it like, yeah, with some-
Honey.
Folsom City Zoo honey.
Nice.
It's gonna be from nine to one. So, special presentations, special foods, and we have one for all of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, call the first item, please.
That takes you to your first scheduled presentation item this evening. This will be City of Folsom Resolution of Commendation honoring the Folsom American Little League Ten U All-Stars. One of the team, come on down.
Oh, my goodness. All right. I'm gonna read this resolution, and then we can take some official photographs, okay? This is the City of Folsom Resolution of Commendation honoring the Folsom American Little League Ten U All-Stars. Whereas the Folsom American Little League Ten U All-Star Teams is, team is part of Folsom's vibrant youth sports community, representing the city with exceptional teamwork, sportsmanship, and dedication to the game of baseball. And whereas the team went undefeated in both the Sunrise Tournament and the District Fifty-four All-Star Tournament, securing the District Fifty-four Championship Title. And whereas the team went on to capture the Section Four Championship Title with an impressive overall team record of fourteen wins, one loss, and one tie, heading on to represent Folsom with pride and excitement in the state tournament in Eureka. And whereas the players, Caden Black, Beau Davis, Ethan Gong, Declan Hausman, Curtis Hayes Jr., Colton Henry, Reed McLeod, Hayden Smith, Hunter Smith, Isaiah Trujillo, Hunter Vickers, and Everett Zeeman came together for a summer of incredible baseball, demonstrating positive attitudes, strong work ethic, and the love of the game. And whereas coaches Brandon McLeod, Sean Smith, and Ryan Henry provided outstanding leadership, instruction, and encouragement throughout the season. And whereas the players, coaches, and families of the Folsom American Little League Ten U All-Star Team proudly represented the City of Folsom both on and off the field, now therefore I, Sarah Aquino, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the Folsom community, do hereby congratulate the members of the Folsom American Little League Ten U All-Stars and wish them success in the future, commended this 12th day of August 2025.
Thank you. So, I'm the head coach, Brandon McLeod. I just want to say how proud I am of the kids and my assistant coaches, Ryan and Sean. We do have a gift for the mayor. We have a signed ball by all the coaches and the kids on the team, so we just wanted to give that to you and just commemorate our journey over the summer.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about some of this hardware they're wearing?
Oh, so, let's see. The light blue one is the district championship that we won that was held in Roseville. The purplish one is the section tournament that was in Rancho Cordova. We also have some rings that we won at the Sunrise Tournament over Memorial Day weekend. So, it was great. Unfortunately, we did not get the state championship, but we have something to shoot for for next year. So, always something to shoot for.
Well, I will tell you that I was invited to throw out the first pitch for the opening season this year. I prayed for a rain out. It did rain, but they rescheduled it to the next weekend. But I practiced for a month in my backyard with my husband. We had it all measured out, and I want you to know, I threw a strike right-
I was there.
So, let's scooch together here and take a photo with all the moms, and then we see Commander Bates from our police department back there. We're gonna look at him so he can get our official city photo.
Okay, your next item this evening is gonna be scheduled presentation item number two. This is a presentation on the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District, number 2502. This will be an informational update.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Derek Perez, Municipal Landscape Services Manager for the Parks and Recreation Department. I will be presenting a quick schedule update on the proposed Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District 2025-02. Persuasive to Prop 218 process, when a new assessment district is proposed, specific steps are required. At the June 24, 2025 City Council meeting, step one was initiated by approving Resolution 11403 to initiate proceedings of formation of a proposed landscape and lighting assessment district to be known as a Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District, number 2025-02. Step two is approving the preliminary engineer's report declaring the intention to order the formation of the Natoma Station Maintenance Assessment District, 202502, to levy and collect assessment and to provide notice of public hearing and direct the mailing of assessment ballots within the proposed district. Step three is hosting the public hearing at a future city council meeting and counting the ballots. Based on the Prop 218 process, staff has prepared and anticipated schedule for planning. On June 24, 2025, City Council already approved step one in the process. We are adjusting the schedule to review the method of apportionment and conduct additional outreach. Today's staff is providing a schedule update for awareness and proposed schedule moving forward during the reassessment process. Fall 2025 will include community outreach meetings, educating the public on process and answering any questions for the upcoming proposed assessment. Winter 2025 will include the City Council intent meeting, preliminary engineer's meeting, engineer's report, public hearing notice, ordering of the ballots, host a community outreach meeting, and host a public hearing and count the ballots. Our next steps are that you see here, staff is gonna be working with the communications team to prepare marketing materials for noticing of the upcoming community outreach meetings, the preliminary engineer's report prepared and presented to council in winter 2025, and the final steps is ballots mailed out in early 2026, host a community outreach meeting, and ballots counted at final steps of the Prop 218 process. Staff has been reviewing the proposed schedule internally and with our consultant to make sure we captured all the required steps during the Prop 218 process. Staff took into consideration during the planning process ample public noticing for community outreach, staffer this loud and clear at the two community outreach meetings in May, and wanted to make sure their comments were addressed during the planning process for the proposed assessment for their landscape and lighting district. That concludes my rapport. I'm happy to answer any questions. The QR code is updated, so it will take you to our brand-new lighting and landscape district website too, as well as our city website.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
No, I just want to thank you for all the work you've done on this and updating the website, and I've been trying to send that information around to various interested parties. Still have a lot of education to do, but made some strong steps in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions at this side?
If I could just add a comment, it's important to note whether we were to move forward more quickly with the process or the process that Derek outlined, the result in the actual time that the new assessments could be implemented is the same, right? So, just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, next item.
Okay, your next item this evening will be your consent calendar.
And we do have a request from the public to poll items five, seven, and eight. Does anybody want to poll anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the others.
I'll move the consent calendar for approval absent items five, seven, and eight.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Council Members Leary-
Yes.
Raythal-
Yes.
Kozlowski-
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes.
Okay, your first polled item is number five. This is resolution number 11415. This is a resolution accepting a grant from the U.A.C. for the police department and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Peregrine Technologies for a real-time decision and operations management platform and appropriation of funds. And our request to speak came from James Tedford.
Good evening. Good evening. After reviewing the staff report, I had some questions, clarifications that I think should be added to the staff report potentially before the city council takes action on the item. The first item that I had a question on is the Homeland Security Grant Program. I'm assuming that's from the Department of, the Federal Department of Homeland Security. I think that should be addressed in the item, and the next question is that does the grant from, you know, the Homeland, Department of Homeland Security require that we use, the city use Peregrine Technologies as the vendor? That's not clear, you know, if that's a requirement of the grant program or not. And if it wasn't required, why was Peregrine Technology selected as the vendor for this program? And the second, the next question is, what are the estimated annual costs if the system is renewed in subsequent years after, you know, after the first year where there's basically no cost? And if the city does not renew the contract with Peregrine, are there any costs associated with going back to the way the systems are now? You know, is there any cost to revert back? And then, the last question has more to do with the information that the system is collecting. Who has, who has access to the system? I mean, all the data collection in real time? I mean, does Peregrine Technologies have access to this data? Are they able to watch it? I mean, is the Department of Homeland Security involved in this? You know, what are the rights of the city versus federal government as a grantor, you know, on this program? You know, I think those items should be addressed in the staff report, so it's clear to us what, what the city is actually getting involved here by accepting this grant from, I'm assuming, the Department of Homeland Security.
Great, Mayor. I'd like to invite a member of the police department to come forward for some of those questions, but I can start, you know, in the grant or in the staff report. I mean, it is a Homeland Security Grant Program, so it is from Homeland Security. It is a federal grant. One of the conversations we've had internally related to, it's great that we're getting the grant for this year, but in our budget conditions, what about the subsequent years? And so, it's my understanding that if we decide not to continue utilizing this service, we wouldn't have to do so. And so, implementing this would enable us to, to give something, a test run, almost like a pilot program, and to see if there are actually significant benefits that it would be worth it going forward to expend those funds. But to all your other questions, appreciate Commander Bates being here. And if I could just ask you to be close by in case we missed a question, so.
Thank you, Mr. City Councilmen, members of council. I'm Andrew Bates, commander with Folsom Police Department. To reiterate, yes, it is a Federal Department of Homeland Security Grant. Money is given to the region every year, and as a region, we decide how to spend it. The region this year decided to invest in Peregrine. Peregrine is an overlay on top of our existing systems. We're not getting rid of any of our existing systems, so to answer your question of cost, there is no cost if we decide not to continue using it after one year. We simply stop, turn it off, stop paying, and there is no further cost. All of our systems continue to operate in terms of call dispatching, call monitoring, record-keeping. Sharing data is up to us. We can share data with the region, and that's the idea behind what we're doing. We are prohibited from sharing certain information with the federal government, particularly under the California Values Act, so I don't anticipate that we'll be sharing with federal agencies. This is going to be a regional tool to help us catch the criminals who might pop back and forth between, say, downtown Sacramento to us, to Citrus Heights. It'll allow us, as long as all agencies are happy sharing, to search across all those platforms for who might have had a red Camaro with a dented rear end that was involved in multiple thefts from stores. And Peregrine can help us pull all that information together and give us pointers to each other's data. It is a CEGIS-compliant system that keeps the data secure. We only share if we want to share. Did I miss any of your questions? Peregrine was selected as part of the U.A.C. Grant, the Urban Area Homeland Security, the Urban Area Security Initiative chose Peregrine as a vendor because they got a substantial discount to offer it to the region, so there was no open bid, there was no open, there was no, nothing that the city could have done in terms of selecting that vendor. Ours was a take it or leave it option. We could either accept the grant and go along and try this out for a year, or we could sit back and say, you know what, this is not for us, we don't want to use it. There was no other choice, and there was no other way we could use this money other than to accept it and also move forward with Peregrine.
Sure. Follow-up question to the not having a choice. Was, to your question, was the grant specific to Peregrine, or was the regional decision to use Peregrine? And the grant could have been used some other way.
So, we get a pot of money from the federal government?
Yeah.
All the agencies come together, and we discussed Peregrine.
Okay.
There's a longer backstory behind that of using humans as analysts and relying on them to see the data and see the themes that were happening, and then send a report out to us a couple days or later. Peregrine has the ability for us all to run our own searches and get that intelligence out of our raw data.
I understand the capability. Are there competitors to Peregrine that the region could have chosen?
You know, I wasn't involved in those discussions, so I don't know if there was-
But if-
I can't, I can't tell you that I have asked the council for Peregrine in two prior years, not the last two, but it's something that we've been interested in for quite a while.
Yeah, yeah, I recall that. I think that's it. Thank you. Just wanted to mine into that a little bit.
The next, the other question was on the follow-up costs, yearly costs, if we decide to keep the system in place. I mean, has that been looked at?
Yes. Right now, the follow-up cost is $64,000 for each year if we decide to keep it running. It's a software service that we're leasing.
Okay. And any other, we're asked to speak on this item?
No, sorry. No further request to speak on this item.
Do you have all your questions answered?
Yeah, I just, you know, just reiterate, I would like to see that, you know, the staff report actually address these issues, you know, so that it's, it's clear that, you know, what we're getting involved in, you know.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from council members? Okay, otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move item number five.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Council Members Leary-
Yes.
Raythal-
Yes.
Kozlowski-
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes.
Okay, the next item also polled at the request of Mr. Tedford is item number seven, resolution number 11437. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with NTU Technologies from the Water Operating Fund for the purchase of chemicals for the water treatment plant. Come on down, I'll start your three-minute timer again.
We do appreciate that you read the agenda in the staff report, so thank you. Not, not very many people do.
Okay. My question on this, the purchase, was, was there any type of competitive bid process on, on this purchase? I don't see any other vendors listed. I don't see any discussion of going out for different types of bids or anything like that. And so, there's no description of how NTU Technologies was selected for this contract award, you know, and other items in the city council packets. I have seen, you know, address, you know, various bid procedures that have been followed, so I have, I don't know, I don't have any, I don't have a firm, you know, confidence that, you know, the, the award amount was determined to be fair and reasonable. So, there's no, there's no discussion in the staff report about-
Okay. We can have someone answer your question. Don't go too far, because you got the next item too. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Marcus Yasutaki, our environmental water resources director, will address this.
All right, good evening. Mayor Aquino, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, environmental and water resources director. Yes, as indicated in the staff report, this is a sole purchase from NTU Technologies. One, I mean, I'd have to go back to 2018 originally to see what the original purchase entailed, but because we've been using this company and these specific products that are designed for our specific treatment process, as well as the typical water quality coming into the treatment plant, we continue to use NTU Technologies over the years, because if we tried to use something else, while we may be able to competitively bid other customers currently, because we don't have the makeup of their chemical composition, and they wouldn't have the chemical composition of what NTU Technologies provides today, we would have to then test their product in a trial basis, which is time and money for not only the city staff, but working with another company to not only produce a separate bid document just to trial and error another commodity, then we'd have to prove that out. Then, once we did that, we would have to request a permanent amendment from the State Water Resources Control Board, Division of Drinking Water, which is an additional cost to time and staff. Now, I haven't put pen to pen, pen to paper to say, okay, each one of those steps would cost X amount of dollars, but because we have a good product in place and because we have a well-oiled machine out at the treatment plant, we continue to use, and I would recommend continuing to use, NTU Technologies.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from my colleagues?
Just one for Marcus. So, first of all, completely trust your intuition. I completely trust your intuition. How can you, given all of those constraints and sort of extra work that would be necessary to try and open a bid process up, how do you determine that it's a fair price for the services or the goods that you're receiving? Is there a comparison you can make looking at other market pricing for things?
We probably could if we were looking at other agencies that had a similar product to what we have. Now, I can't say that, say, San Juan Water District, City of Roseville, has similar cost associated with it. What might be beneficial to the discussion is if we went back to 2018, let's say, and looked at where these, where this originated and just looked over the years relative to the water treatment industry, are chemical costs kind of in line with, you know, indices that you would expect over time? But what I can say is, you know, over the years, especially recently, we've been fairly consistent with the dollar amount we're spending on chemical costs per year. So, we, I'd have to go back, but we are typically under budget, maybe five to eight percent. And a lot of it's just gonna depend on the water year and how much water is actually treated, but we've been-
Well, for, for future instances like this, it might be worthwhile to just have a little narrative included in the staff report that describes that, you know, this is, this is a product that's tried and true, and here's how its price has escalated compared to what we would expect in the market, and it seems fair.
That'd be easy to add.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Thanks, Mayor. Raythal, you have a question?
Just a quick question, and I think I, you answered this when I saw this. I was, I was, I had the same concerns that you had, right, is how do we make sure we're getting a fair price, and why aren't we going out to other folks? These are proprietary chemicals. We can't co-bid any of these, or the bulk of these chemicals through another supplier?
We might be able to if we are able to get that proprietary information and say, hey, can you mimic this from, from another company? Or say, hey, here are the parameters in which we need to work in. Can you develop your own proprietary-based polymer or anything else? And then, again, go through and test that. So, I don't, I don't see anything prohibiting us from doing something on a broader scale and developing some bigger bid package. The only thing is, okay, once you do that, there's still a process to go through before you're effectively using that in the distribution of the water that the city's treating. So, while you may find a lower price, you may not, I don't know.
And what does it cost to find that?
But I know we are going to spend money to do that, and if we had to pencil that out, I can, we can, I can talk to our team to see just what that means, but it's not as simple as just buying another chemical and introducing it tomorrow, once it arrives on site.
Manager?
Thank you. So, first off, Mr. Tedford, thank you for your questions. I think what I'm taking from this is, we may not know exactly today how we can demonstrate whether we're getting the best price or not, but I think that's something going forward that we can work on, you know, when we look at the 2018 data to see what the cost escalation is, and maybe even reach out to some of our other, you know, partner agencies to see what they're paying, because, I mean, it's a really good point, right? We want to make sure that are we being taken advantage of because we're locked into the system or not? And so, I think we're getting a pretty good deal here, but I think it would be beneficial going forward for us to confirm that.
Council Member Leary, any questions?
Yeah, I did have one question for Marcus, and that is, would, if we switched chemicals and the method of assessing the efficacy of those chemicals, would there potentially be some problems with the results? Because that would be something that you would want to know before you switched chemicals and the method for testing them.
Correct. So, if there was an option, or if the city decided to move in a different direction, there is a, what they call a bench testing process that the city would go through, and it's effectively, you're mimicking the treatment process, but you're not doing it with the water you're sending to your customers. So, there would be a, a small-scale test that you would do, that you would introduce these other chemicals, then you'd have to go trial by, trial by air, and you'd want to see how these react in the wintertime, how they react in the springtime, how they react in the summertime, and then how they react in the fall, because each difference in temperature and water quality makes a difference as to how these specific chemicals will react over time. So, there would be a process to do that before we actually started anything, and we would have to be comfortable knowing that, okay, based on those bench tests, nothing is, that we know of, at least through that data, is causing any sign, really any changes to the quality of the water that we're delivering to the customers.
Yeah, and so, if you were going to go out for bid and you wanted to look at more than one other company for producing these things, that could be rather time-consuming and, I'm guessing, expensive?
It, it could be, because, yeah, if we were to open this up and say, okay, we're gonna do a bench test of, let's just say, we know of four other kind of chemical manufacturers that are regionally close, I mean, I don't think we would go to somebody that, let's say, was in Texas or Tennessee unless they were a significant reduction in price, possibly because of the delivery, then we would probably have to reach out to each one of those companies and say, okay, hey, here is the range of parameters that we see in the winter, the spring, the summer, and the fall. Do you have, you know, these different polymers for our testing purposes? And if they did, then we might have a small contract to purchase- And if they did, then we might have a small contract to purchase a certain amount of their chemicals that would cover a test case, basically, for a year. And then we, if they all worked, right, then we could put a bid that says, okay, here's what we're looking for. The four of them could bid plus NTU Technologies. But yes, we, we would have to ensure that whatever they have is compatible with our treatment process before we made any switches. And if we found that they weren't, then obviously they wouldn't be able to meet the bid requirements once we set those in place.
Yeah. The reason I'm asking this is I have some experience with medical testing equipment, and if you switch vendors or types of chemicals used in the testing, you end up with different ranges, so it's not as simple as it sounds when you decide to make those kinds of changes. So thanks for elaborating on that.
And I don't feel professionally that what we are paying on an annual basis is out of line. We, we can do the comparisons and, and get those indices, but I, I would be shocked if this was way off to kind of being out of bounds or out of line.
All right.
Thank you.
It's a shame that you weren't invited to Mayor Justin's under review on projects, because we have asked a lot of them.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Right. Add, add a little something to that?
Sure.
Yeah, I just, you know, the fact that we have a procurement process here in the city where me as a resident doesn't know at what level these decisions are made, or who's actually reviewing the bid process, the procurement process. There doesn't seem, I know that there's language in the city code that addresses it, because I've looked at it, but, you know, does it rest at the gentleman's level that was just talking about it? Does it go up to the city manager? Do you have like a contracting officer that actually looks at that stuff? I mean, that actually looks at the contracts and makes sure they're legal? Anyway, that's, you know, with all the additional information he provided, I may have had additional questions, but I, I think that that information should be provided as a minimum in the staff report.
Sure. And if I could add, Madam Mayor, I, I mean, I think you're illustrating how this process works, right? I mean, so just from a staff perspective is, we, we utilize the best information available, and we can anticipate every question that a member of the public may have. We try to do the very best we can, and this illustrates that, man, we, we thank folks like yourself who take the time to review our packet that come to the meetings and, and bring things to, to our attention that maybe we haven't necessarily considered. And so I, I'm sure there are many different times where we can add more information, and, and part of it is, is just trying to balance the time and effort put into those with all the other tasks that we're assigned to. We're not always able to, to put in all the detail because we're going from one task to the next. But when you bring stuff like this forward, it's really helpful because, man, this is really important to, to some of our constituents, so how can we provide information in a way that's better understood and provides more detail? So I thank you for that.
All right.
I'll move approval of resolution 11437.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmember Leary.
Yes.
Raythel.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes.
Okay, you all said a request for Mr. Telford to pull item number eight. This is resolution number 11439. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Mars Company for a software license and maintenance subscription for the meter test bench.
Okay.
And this goes along with the same vein that I've been talking about all along, is, you know, was there any type of competitive bidding, or looking at alternative sources, or was this a sole source justification? How was it approved? Who approved it? And, you know, it's, it's going back to the basic question of how the costs of the contract were determined to be fair and reasonable for, you know, us, the city of Folsom.
Thank you. Mr. Yasutaki.
All right, thanks for having me back. So back in 2019, as noted in the staff report, that is when the city purchased the meter test bench. Back at that time, the city did have a competitive bidding process to purchase the Mars meter test bench. I believe there were two, if I recall, bidders for the meter test bench. Mars was the low bidder, so we followed the procurement policies as laid out in the city's municipal code at that time. And since then, because it is a Mars test bench, we can't use, you know, ABC software to run the Mars test bench. So we use their, or will have to use their software and licensing like many other softwares that are provided to, whether you're an individual or like us at the city. So there isn't an alternative program that we can use from a different company. It's not compatible with the Mars test bench. So we are using their, you know, their equipment, and because we have that piece of equipment, we need to use their software. Now, I guess we could poll other test bench companies and then see what they charge for licensing and maintenance, but I don't know what that would provide us, just, it'd provide us a data point, but we have Mars, and unless we want to switch and use and rebid another test bench, there's really not another alternative that we have in terms of the licensing and software maintenance.
Here again, I think it would just be useful to have a little, like, what's the escalation been over time analysis of that software? Just as a, you know, a data point that somebody could look at and say, has this a reasonable escalation they've put on us? Or are they landing and expanding, which is always the fear with software programs?
All right. Any other questions for my colleagues? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you. I will move approval of resolution 11439.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
All right, councilmembers Leary.
Yes.
Raythel.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes, thank you.
All right, that takes you to new business, item number 13. This is ordinance number 1355. This is an ordinance adding chapter 8.39, which would be titled unlawful behavioral nuisances to municipal code to prevent, remove, and abate behavioral nuisances that negatively affect people, properties, and businesses in the community. So the introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, Madam Mayor, Member of the City Council, Stephen Wong, City Attorney. Before you tonight, as Madam City Clerk indicated this introduction, the first reading of an ordinance that seeks to prevent, remediate, and abate behavioral-based public nuisances on any property in the city of Folsom. The focus of these ordinances is to target the behaviors of bad actors, and some of those examples include the purchase, sale, use, and transport, also distribution of illegal drugs and controlled substances, hostile, intimidating, and threatening interactions with people in the neighborhood and the community, which we have received some complaints lately between neighbors, and illegal activities in open and public view. Now, those behaviors negatively, negatively affect the health, safety, and the peaceful enjoyment of all the people in the neighborhood and businesses in the community. The goal through this ordinance is to, is to discourage and abate bad behaviors by giving city staff, whether it's code enforcement or law enforcement, another tool to use to assist ordinary, law-abiding citizens in the community to eradicate the bad behaviors and remove the bad actors from the community by declaring such behavior a public nuisance subject to abatement through lawful processes. Now, these are some examples of behavioral problems in certain neighborhoods that Folsom residents, residents have complained to the city in the past. Here we have a photograph of controlled substances, I believe those are opiates. We have photograph, a photograph of drug paraphernalia. Here we have a syringe. We have another photograph of epidural syringe. We have unregistered weapon and a magazine, more drug syringe, and those are just some of the examples of bad behavior that's causing issues within neighborhoods and, and their communities. So the abatement will be made through administrative citation, judicial appointment of a receiver for the property, cost recovery through property liens, possible judicial foreclosure, and other civil and criminal proceedings. Now, very importantly, it is entirely a new approach for the city to put someone's property at risk, and hence, this is a big hammer for the city to use. Hopefully, the bad actors who are causing issues in communities will take notice. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council introduce and conduct first reading of the ordinance. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Wong, can you just kind of explain a little bit about, you know, what this will allow us to do? I mean, the, the behaviors that you described there, illegal drug use, sale, prostitution, I mean, those things are illegal already. So what, what does this ordinance allow us to do that we can't do right now?
Several things. Very good question, Madam Mayor. So first of all, yes, you're right, most of those bad behaviors are already addressed by state laws, and some of those are qualified in the penal code that the law enforcement officers can enforce. The problem with some of those situations is it depends on who the DA or the deputy DA is, and they exercise prosecu- prosecutorial discretion from time to time. It depends on how high in the priority of cases that they handle, that, that they may not have the staff or resources to tackle those neighborhood concerns, but we do, but we do. So instead of going through a criminal procedure, which they still can do, and simultaneously we can proceed administratively, we're putting those bad, bad behaviors, bad actors on notice that we are putting their properties at risk if they continue with this path of disruptive behavior causing problems in the neighborhood. So the burden of proof is much different. Instead of beyond a reasonable doubt in a criminal prosecution, it's preponderance of evidence. So we don't have to have no doubt. We can have people saying, this could be that, this could be this, and, and this and that, but at the end of the day, it depends on whether there's enough proof to show this is a public nuisance that should be abated, and that takes community input and so on and so forth. So at the end of the day, you know, if, if we're putting someone's property at risk, that's a big deal, and this can go through judicial, judicial foreclosure, like I indicated, and be taking all of the, the bad actor's control, putting in the hand of a, a neutral receiver whose only client is the judge, is the superior court judge, not even the city, take care of their problem, behavior, problems, issues in the neighborhood, and hand the neighbors their peace and enjoyment back to them.
And it's pretty common for other cities around us to have this type of ordinance?
Not common, not according to my experience, but certainly a powerful tool that we didn't have, but city manager Whitmire was able to introduce and, and explain how this is a good tool for us to have. Luckily, as you know, we don't have many of those situations here, but we, we have had to deal with recently. Hopefully, we will not need to use this, but if we do, we do. We will have a good tool to have.
All right. City manager, you want to make some comments?
Yeah, uh, uh, Mr. Wong, appreciate his moving forward on this and putting this together. In my experience, this is very typical. This is the sixth city where I've worked, and I, I didn't verify all of them, but this was common language that I was accustomed to. When you look at public nuisances, in the Folsom Municipal Code, it talks about property maintenance issues. And, and if we really kind of think of the things that can bother a neighborhood, it's more than just the condition of the property, it's actually some of the consistent behaviors that are conducted at those properties. And, and I think what, what's really important for us is to allow a tool to enable our, our code enforcement officers and our law enforcement officers to be problem solvers, because typically what happens is, when, when you address the, these issues, most folks, I'd say 95% there, oh, man, I didn't realize this was a problem, and they, they get it resolved. But there's some that, and recently, these popped up in, in, in actually multiple corners of the city, of pretty egregious behaviors of just harassment. We have records of the police department going out there significant amounts of time, sometimes even making arrests, but it doesn't solve the problem. And so this enables us to uniformly give them due process and, and to coach, because we always want to coach to compliance, but there's some that they just don't want to change. And so I, I just found that this is a powerful tool in the other jurisdictions where I've worked, to hold those bad actors accountable for the behavior that maybe the state law is really slow and then sometimes ineffectual at, at implementing.
Okay. Any questions for my colleagues? Vice Mayor Raythel?
I've just got, got a couple, I think, of the, the code enforcement cases that we've just had a hard time getting resolution on, and obviously, it's very frustrating for those neighbors and homeowners in the vicinity. One of the ones I'm thinking of is, is when they've been disconnected from municipal power, and they run a generator in their backyard for years, that that can just be really, you know, it, it can be really frustrating over time, right? For somebody to run a generator right next to your bedroom window for multiple years. I just want to make sure that is included in here. And then the other one that I know we've, we've struggled with, just thinking of one other case that I, I watched go on for a long time before I was sitting on the dais, was, was unpermitted construction. And it, it seemed like, no matter how many times we went out to the site, it seemed to not be resolved. So I just want to make sure that those two cases, and, and like the city manager said, most of these times when we give notice, people go, oh, I'll, I'll fix that and comply. But these two particular cases I'm thinking of, the homeowners both said, you know, basically screw off, city of Folsom, and, and it seemed like we had a hard time getting a, a resolution out of them.
So the answer to the first scenario is yes, it is in here with a no is issue. The second one is actually not necessarily behavior, but it can be perceived that way, but in my mind, it's actually something that can be easily dealt with. So I'm surprised to hear that. I'm surprised to hear that. We have dealt with those issues, unpermitted construction before, in Brooks Ranch, for example, something, a, a very normal, very nice community, and then boom, we have something.
I'm not calling out any specific neighborhood here.
I'm just saying. Right, so we have dealt with those before, and we used our resources to deal with that one. So if you have any other situations outstanding, please do let me know.
I think you meant to say hypothetically.
Hypothetically.
Our, our building inspectors do know how to issue rate tax.
Okay, so you feel like that is covered sufficiently in the other ordinance to where we can pursue civil remedies, should we need to?
Correct.
Thank you.
And actually, I mean, I, I don't know if Pam or another member of the staff can kind of talk to that.
No, I think, I think Mr. Wong answered that correctly, that the, the generator has been a, a problem for us in, in some ways in the past, and I think this gives us additional remedies for that, but the illegal permitting, that's something that as soon as we're notified, we, we take action and, and shut it down and, and make sure that they're going through the proper process, or in some cases, you know, removing unpermitted structures. So that hasn't been as much a problem. We, we have dealt, the behavioral issues are harder to solve long-term, as been described here. The, the property maintenance are a little bit easier because we have that, you know, we have those tools in our toolbox to address it through our current code. So I think this will give us that, that additional opportunity for some other nuisance issues that have been a challenge for us to address.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Kozlowski, any questions? Councilmember Leary?
I just have one question. That is some, you know, these are all fairly vague, and so documentation of, you know, animal disturbances, like, are, are these going to be some kind of, something that happens on a regular basis and there's going to be a number of times is acceptable? You know, like, one time obviously isn't going to incur any kind of enforcement, but does it have to be once a day or a month, or how are you going to?
One time maybe enough. One time, you're a really good question, Councilmember Leary, and the term I would use is flexible. Those terms are intentionally flexible so that we can capture a wide variety of, of objectionable behavior to the neighbors. We are complaint, complaint-based organization, so we don't actively go out to check on people's yards and knock on their doors and, and snoop around neighborhoods to find out who the bad actor is in the, among the neighbors. We do not do that. But once we receive a complaint, because somebody found it objectionable, it can be just one time. This allows us to take action. So hopefully, through teaching and training, that will solve the neighborhood issue.
And this would be an officer that would go out to document these?
It can be a, it can be code enforcement officer or law enforcement officer, or both, depending on the situation, in the time as well.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good, good question.
Do we have any requests to speak on this item from the public?
No, you do not.
All right. Then I will entertain a motion to introduce this ordinance. Introduction and first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Leary.
Yes.
Raythel.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes.
Okay, your last discussion item this evening is item number 14. This is relates to a California Department of Transportation Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program for a Sustainable Transit Connections to Health Services Planning and Feasibility Study Contracts. There's two before you, as described in resolution number 11442 and resolution number 11443.
Good evening. Good evening, Desmond.
Mayor Aquino, members of the City Council, I'm Desmond Parington, Planning Manager in the Community Development Department. I'm here before you tonight to talk to you about actions related to previously approved grant application and grant fund award that we received from the California Department of Transportation, also known as Caltrans. With me tonight is Anthony Adams, the Director of Planning from Sacramento Regional Transit, who are partners in this grant, along with Bob Grandy, Principal with Fair and Peers, who is the consultant selected to assist us with this work, which we'll touch on in the presentation tonight. So as you may recall, the city secured a grant from Caltrans to look at the feasibility of funding and implementing transit service to serve the major healthcare facilities in the city, both north and south of Highway 50, as well as to serve key connections within the Folsom Plan area and Folsom Ranch. This is designed to kind of build on some of the similar successes that RT has had partnering with healthcare and other entities, including the UC Davis-Cosway connection and the Elk Grove to UC Davis Medical Center Express. The grant that we received, which was approximately $218,000, does require a local match, which has been being met primarily through staff time, both from the city as well as regional transit. The city is in the lead on this grant, whereas SAC RT is providing transit planning and implementation support. And we've crafted in a memorandum of understanding, which is before you tonight, which lays out those roles related to this effort. In addition, we issued an RFP and received responses to that for consultant assistance with this effort, and ultimately selected Fair and Peers based on their experience and knowledge of doing similar transit projects. This is approximately a two-year effort, and we have, as you've seen here, we've gotten underway with some of the early work. But before you tonight is the action on the memorandum of understanding between the city and Sacramento Regional Transit District. And then the second action in Resolution 11443 is the resolution authorizing that the city manager execute a professional services agreement with Fair and Peers for this work. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Any questions for Desmond? Councilmember Leary?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, and I think this is a great idea, and I'm glad we're proceeding with it. And my question is probably moot, but is, I think a part of this is going to be looking at the feasibility and affordability, like, is there a financial model going to be built into this presentation? Because we're talking about delivering people who are low, you know, income to medical services through, you know, and others that can afford more.
Yeah, so the primary focus of this is to get transit to these areas and look at what the cost of delivering those services would be, and the hope is to do a model similar to what was done for Route 137, which is the Elk Grove to UC Davis Express, which was funded by UC Davis Medical Center. That's one of the things they're going to be looking at as part of the study is, you know, is, you know, the cost of transit service and getting patients as well as employees to those facilities who may be low income. So we're going to be reaching out, doing outreach to low income and other disadvantaged communities, both here in Folsom and in adjacent areas.
And so the financial sustainability of that into the future will be?
Yeah, we'll have to look at that as part of the overall cost of operations.
Right. I know RT did have some similar kinds of programs going in downtown Sacramento, and the ridership was not enough to sustain the service over time, and I'm hoping that we can come up with some ways to make sure that that's not just a temporary service, that it'll be long-term.
Yeah, that's the goal, is to have this be a long-term service. The question with regard to the actual, you know, cost of to use the service, you know, that's something we'll have to look at as part of that whole financial model.
Right, because we can't count on long-term grant support for these services.
Yeah, the whole idea, the whole goal behind this is to get support from the businesses that would benefit from having that transit service. And the idea is to connect the 15-minute light rail service that we have, the stations at, you know, Hazel, Iron Point, Glen Station, to better connect our transit service that currently under Route 10 operates on an hour headway to something, you know, that's more aligned with the light rail service, to get folks, you know, to these areas, whether it's UC Davis or Diggity Health, south of the freeway, or Sutter or Kaiser, north of the freeway.
Okay, thank you. Hope this works. Go ahead.
If the principal beneficiary here, separate from the patient, is actually their hospital system, why wouldn't we just be starting with, what are you willing to pay to deliver your patients, and then building a system that works within that structure?
That's going to be part of our discussion. So we're going to be reaching out to the stakeholders, obviously, the key stakeholders include all these medical systems. Again, UC Davis built this model in Elk Grove, and Anthony can probably speak to that in more detail, but they funded that to the tune of about $300,000 a year for a three-year contract. But the focus was on getting employees to, from Elk Grove, because they've discovered that many of their employees lived in Elk Grove, to the medical center. So that helped with, you know, meet sustainability goals, it helped reduce congestion, and it provided with their employees with an alternative. We're going to be looking at the benefits of that type of a model and talking with the healthcare providers to see, you know, how that aligns with their goals. But we also need to look at their clients and their customers who are, you know, coming to actually use the facilities, not just those that work there. And then in addition to that, looking at what types of services may be able to be provided in the Folsom Plan area to key destinations beyond just the medical centers, like the Folsom Town Center, for example, the shopping centers that, you know, one's done and one's under construction. So we're looking at kind of all of that, and then looking what will make sense from a financial model.
A couple of things rattling around in my head is our, you know, attempt to keep the on-demand services available at RT, and how the cost of those is phenomenal relative to the ridership. And at one point, we identified that Uber was the least expensive way to provide those trips. So I just, you know, I hope we keep an open mind to all of that. And then secondarily, we in Folsom have a shuttle service that runs a couple of days a week down on Sutter Street for a different purpose, but serves a similar purpose in that it shuttles people from places where there's parking to restaurants where they want to eat. And I have thought for years now, since that ended up working pretty well, is that an on-demand, light vehicle shuttle, golf carts, extended golf carts, could work for other reasons within Folsom if it was strategically timed, right? So you'd have, you know, maybe on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, there was a railie shuttle going around to take people to the grocery store. Perhaps, you know, at nine in the morning, there's people, you know, getting shuttled to one of the hospital systems.
Well, it's a great idea. You don't have to use the same tool for every single thing that's out there, right? You don't have to have different arrows in your quiver. So we are looking at different service models, and the key here is cost sharing for the services that we're trying to provide. We are also looking at first-last-mile connections, which is kind of what you're talking about. Like, if you're at the light rail station, how do you get to your last mile connection? We are looking at an Uber first-last-mile program now that's would supplement our flex program that we have now as well. So we're looking at different models out there. We have to see what works best. If you're moving a lot of people, the bus is the cheapest way to move them. If you're moving just a couple of people per hour, it is a first-last-mile, maybe it's an Uber TNC. So it depends what the demand is, it depends what the cost-sharing appetite is as well.
So the reason for mentioning the light rail stations, though, is that because you're focused on Folsom and those are congregation spots? Or because you're actually focused regionally, and that's a place for people to come to Folsom first and then be shuttled the last mile?
We, you know, we improve that service every 15 minutes, and we want to make sure we leverage those services. Now we have one hour every connection, we have connections to the bus service one every hour, and we have 15-minute light rail service. So we want to make sure that the connections of somebody is, for instance, having to take a light rail to, you know, a medical service, that they're not waiting at the light rail station, that they have that quality connection to make sure that.
I'm just thinking that if I'm a resident of Folsom, living in the Plan area, and I have a half a mile from my door to the, you know, UC Davis Medical Center place, I'm not going to first leave and go to a light rail station. So I'm just suggesting that we make sure we look at all potential trip scenarios. I'm sure you will. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Rethel, any questions?
Just a quick one on where our share of the grant is coming from. That's coming from the RT Impact Fund, or is that a general fund expense?
So the, this is coming out of staff time, and that staff time is coming out of the light rail, the light rail fund.
Thank you.
All right, we have any public requests to speak on this item?
You do not.
All right, then we need to have two separate motions, please. Thank you very much.
I'd be happy to move approval of Resolution Number 11442.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Leary?
Yes.
Rethel?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes.
And I'll move Resolution Number 11443.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Leary?
Yes.
Rethel?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes, thank you. Takes us to city manager reports, I think.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. A couple of update items regarding the police department. There was arrest made recently in a manslaughter investigation. Fulton Police have arrested 43-year-old Dylan Pierce, a citroenite on manslaughter charges. The arrest follows a June 28 call for medical aid on Gold Lake Drive. Officers arrived to find an unresponsive man who was pronounced dead at the scene despite life-saving efforts. Investigators said the victim had been involved in a physical altercation on the outdoor patio at Folsom Lake Slickers during an event that day. That confrontation turned deadly, leading to the recent arrest. For the fire department, CERT volunteers are needed. The Folsom Fire Department invites residents to join the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT. CERT volunteers assist fire responders during major incidents and educate the community on disaster preparedness. Training begins this month. To register, email contact@folsomsrt.org. Folsom officers recognized for DUI enforcement. Appreciate the efforts of Officers Matt Cantelme and Ethan Vavec of the Folsom Police Department, who were recently recognized by the Mothers Against Drunk Driving for their work in DUI enforcement and prevention. I'm grateful for their efforts in all that they do to help keep us safe. Folsom Police Record Services are now available at Fire Station 34 in the Folsom Plan area. The Folsom Police Department Records Division now offers an additional service location at Folsom Fire Station 34, located south of Highway 50. Office hours at the new site are 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Tuesdays through Thursdays, excluding city holidays. Fire Station 34 is located at 3255 Westwood Drive. Record staff assist with non-emergency services during office hours, including report requests, citation sign-offs, calls for service, vehicle releases, fee payments, repossession, VIN verifications, and public records requests. Also would like to just thank the community, the Folsom Police Department, and Fire Department for their efforts with National Night Out. This is my first time here in Folsom, and I just really enjoyed getting out and seeing the different neighborhoods and people coming together to share food and just camaraderie. So it was great to be in Folsom that night. And whoever scheduled the moderate temperatures, I was really appreciative of that. For the last, like, 10, 15 years that I remember, it seems like it's always 100-plus-degree day, and so we were grateful for that. Registration is open for Community Service Day. The 12th Annual Folsom Community Service Day takes place Saturday, September 20, and more than 1,500 volunteers are needed to complete projects throughout the city. Volunteer registration for most projects is now open. Learn more and sign up at www.folsom.ca.us/communityserviceday. Also, the city is seeking applications for an open planning commission seat. The City of Folsom is accepting applications for an at-large seat on the planning commission. The commission reviews planning applications and advises on land use matters. The seat is for the remainder of a term ending December 2026. Applicants must be Folsom residents and registered voters. Applications are due this Thursday. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kozlowski?
Just one thing. The SECOG Land Use and Natural Resources Committee met this week, and we had a very extended conversation about future funding for the Green Means Go program. And just as a reminder to people, Green Means Go was a local attempt to acknowledge the fact that our region got an especially high greenhouse gas goal from the state. And we said, hey, state, maybe we need some other tools in the form of money to do things. What we've honed in on is trying to reduce vehicle miles traveled by enabling more infill development in core parts of cities. For Folsom, our green zone that we identified is along Bidwell Street in the area between Sutter and Target. And planning work on that has been going apace, and we are looking to extend that program into the future. It was an interesting discussion. We went off on some real tangents about things, but it's just FYI that's going on right now. And then the commentary period on the blueprint, which is the regional planning document, closed on the 8th of August, and those comments are all being compiled, and the public comments are all being compiled right now. And a draft version of what is effectively the final version of that will be issued later this fall. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Rethel?
Just wanted to report out on a couple of meetings that I attended over the last couple of weeks. First off, I went to the Sacramento Steps Forward Continuum of Care meeting, and that is really trying to bring the regional agencies together in order to discuss regional approaches to homelessness and the federal funding primarily that comes with the continuum of care. Kind of the takeaway is for me, number one, is the funding has been drastically decreased with each successive funding round. I heard really a strong desire for collaboration within the room, definitely, you know, different opinions on what should be prioritized versus other things, but a lot of open discussion with folks that are staffing these agents, staffing the agency, but also the vendors that are providing some of the support to the agencies, along with the elected officials and the staff at the different, the county and the different cities. The other thing that I thought was of particular interest is collaborating on accessing data to keep people from falling into homelessness. And that, to me, was a particular win, and I think something that we could all use is if we are all sharing data where we could see where somebody is struggling before they lose their housing, then maybe we have an impact earlier on in the process, which would save tax dollars and also probably a lot of pain and suffering on that human's part. So I'm looking forward to continuing working that and work with our staff to make sure that we're getting access to that data, so we can be looking out for our own residents. I've also been participating in Sacramento Transportation Authority Subcommittee on what STA should be going forward. Really, the focus of that committee is looking at making sure that Sacramento County and the agencies that are within Sacramento County are getting a fair share of the state and federal tax dollars that are there. So nothing to report out yet on that Subcommittee, other than the fact that I've been going and participating in that, and you'll see report outs in the future on that Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Leary?
Thank you. I just have a couple of updates as well. One of them was Sacramento Metro Cable Commission. The city did receive a significant amount of money that comes in from people's cable subscriptions, although that is anticipated to be dropping in the future because of the higher number of people who are dropping their cables. So, you know, it was well over $300,000. We also had grants that were given to the city staff who put in applications for an upgrade in some of our electronic systems from that organization as well. I think it's kind of indicative of how things are changing pretty rapidly in terms of income for cities and ways to actually meet our budget. for cities and ways to actually meet our budget needs. And that's just going to bring me to asking residents to take a look at what we've accomplished so far in addressing our budget issues, and we will be having sessions in September. I think it's planned for the first council meeting. Is that correct?
The second council meeting in September.
Council meeting in September. And, you know, there's, we had a big meeting last month, you know, to talk about firefighters, about how budget adjustments may affect their operations, and this is going to be something that's across the board, and I think the better educated our residents are, the better prepared we are to address concerns and find some other ways forward, following some what will probably be pretty significant cuts. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder for my colleagues and staff and the public, the Sacramento region recently met the 2008 ozone standard, so we can all breathe a little easier. And next Thursday, August 21st, at 10:00 a.m., they're going to have a press conference here behind City Hall at the air monitoring station, so feel free to come out to that. And with that, we will adjourn at 7:41 in memory of Councilmember Rohba's beloved Uncle John Hubbard. Good night, everyone. Thank you.